Hello.
We're still here, Donna. You haven't left.
Okay, I see that we are now live streaming and we are being recorded. So I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting. The Public Defender Service Corporation Board of Trustees. Okay, let me, let me start that again. Because now we're, now we are being recorded. The Public Defender Service Corporation Board of Trustees Regular Meeting of November 2022 is now called to order. Well, the secretary, please call the role.
Chief Justice Ethel of Probably No.
I am present and I am logged on from the Mike Chamber in the Judicial Center.
Presiding Judge Alberto Cilomarina III. Presiding Judge Alberto Cilomarina III.
He's not currently present.
Trustee Cynthia B. Ekubie.
Present and I'm available here in my Havana office. Thank you.
Trustee Donna Emilia Canata.
Half a day, I'm present and I'm in my office in East Gania, Guam, model spot.
Long time friend Jackie Teacher Lucky. Your Honor, we got a note from first day. She's not going to make it to today's meeting.
All right, all right. Thank you for that, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Kathy. So I have entertained that we have three of five members present. And we have a quorum and we're able to conduct the regular business of the Public Defender Service Corporation Board. The first item on the agenda, and I acknowledge that we proof of due notice of the meeting in accordance with Guam law has been duly provided in our packet of documents for this meeting. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 25th, 2022.
Your Honor, I'll go.
I'll go through.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Canata, seconded by trustee Ekubie. And on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I know suppose the ayes have it. So the minutes of October 2025th, October 25th, 2022 is are duly adopted. The next item under all business has to do with the financial status update of the Public Defender APD and CLC. And at this time, I will recognize our finance administrator, Mr. Mike Moreno.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good afternoon, everyone. For the P D S C and the A P D, our first allotment release for the month of November was received on November 9. And the second, we just received it today. P D S C's operating fund is is at 94% and A P D's is at 95%. Moving on to the the domestic violence program, the Stop 2020, the unused balance as of today for Stop 2020 is approximately 3,300. As we have not received any word regarding an extension, we should consider this funding as being not available. One grant still available for D V P, which I call D V P, which we will now refer to moving forward as TAC, the Advocacy Center, is the Improving Criminal Justice Response Grant or the ICJR. The ICJR, the funding available from the ICJR grant as of October 31st is approximately 110,000 and is presently being used for reimbursements for TAC. For the Elder Justice Center for fiscal year 2022, the invoice for September 2022 in the amount of 28,000 is the only outstanding invoice. According to D S C, recently, this invoice had been submitted to the O A for processing on November 8. We will follow up. For fiscal year 2023, although we have not received the signed M O U, we were advised by D S C by the Division of the Senior Citizens to go ahead and submit the October invoice, which we did at the beginning of this month. We will follow up with the status of the September invoice and the October invoice within this week. And that is also the reporting of the finances.
So can you repeat again for us, Mike, what funding is not available and and for what program and the amount?
Yeah, that was the Stop 2020, which we had a balance of 3,300. And we had asked for an extension of that grant, but we have not received any word. And it expired in June of this year. So because we did not get any formal reply from them, I would, I would consider this funding as not being available.
All right, so the recommendation is to close the that funding source. And with Steve, Mr. Attorney Hattori, would that in any way affect the program that it is earmarked for?
No, it shouldn't be, but we'll confirm they might have extended it. We we just waiting word if they're going to extend it. But if if they extended, it'll just roll over. But we have that other I C J R grant that's used to pay salaries for our victim advocates and the staff. So.
Okay, so you'll continue then to monitor the availability of those funds. And at this point, the representation to the board is even if it's not received, no longer available, that that will not adversely affect the program that it is to be utilized for.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
All right. Okay, so so with that, thank you. Any questions for our finance administrator? There being none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. And I'll recognize our executive director, attorney Steve Hattori. And Steve, regarding your report to the board.
Thank you, Chief Justice. So I think a couple of things we just want to add is that apparently we were approved for FEMA reimbursement, I think to the tune of $30,000. So all that pandemic, our pandemic response about $30,000 being reimbursed for us and A P D as well. So there's, I mean, a lot of paperwork that our staff is working on to make sure we get fully reimbursed for those items. We also have that access to counsel grant. I think that one's almost completed, right? We just, we're just running the program now. This is a system of, I think it's seven Zoom monitors that we have set up at the various detention facilities for to interview clients. And I think I think they've been used also for some court hearings as well. We actually have one evening at post six and post six is the admin seg unit. So now instead of come walking out to the admin seg unit and in meeting them at that site, because that's the only unit that we have to go to because of the security risks involved, we're now able to meet those clients at least through Zoom. And when we need to get something signed, we actually go there in person as well, but it helps facilitate the visitation with our clients. As far as the other project we're working on is the Sixth Amendment Center. They did receive a grant and so we'll be working with the court. I know that they're going to be trying to attend court hearings and they would like to meet judicial officers and other stakeholders just to get an idea of how the public defense system on Guam's working. If you guys are interested, I could send like reports they've done for other jurisdictions, they're kind of a national organization. They're usually contracted to do site assessments on the entire, like the public defense system. And it involves things like performance standards, caseload standards and things like that. And I think they're also going to address like eligibility, income guidelines and eligibility standards for our clients. So it should be pretty comprehensive and, you know, next year is the 60th anniversary of Gideon versus Wayne, right? So we think it's really timely and so we look forward to, you know, it's always nice when an independent organization like evaluates our public defense system, make sure we're providing effective assistance of, you know, counsel to our clients. We're really excited about that.
So in reference to that survey, if you could just communicate with the A O C, Christina Barrett, and so she can assist you in any type of logistics coordination that that you will need to in terms of working with your evaluators, then just reach out to Christina, Steve.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I think it's actually covers juvenile defense as well. So I'll make sure we reach out to her. Okay, and then the only other issue really are our stats. And I really apologize, we didn't include in the packet, but I could share them on the screen now.
All right.
And I'll go over them really quickly. So this one is just the, you know, just the October numbers, we picked up 86 cases in October and we included prior years just to give you guys an idea of the caseload over the years, right? So last October, we picked up 91 cases, which is pretty interesting because that was during the height of the pandemic, right? We were almost shut down. Was it 2021 or at 2020, we picked up 109 during October? So, you know, it's kind of interesting. I was thinking the numbers would go up, but we're going to have historically low numbers this year due to the number of misdemeanors that are being charged out. And I think the felony numbers might be a little lower than normal, too. And so we had back in 2019, pre-pandemic, we had 135 cases. So the pandemic has shown a reduction in criminal cases being charged out. Although, you know, public perception is that crime is rampant, but the actual numbers aren't really reflecting that. I think it might be to the social media. So that's that one. And so, you know, we also have this other graph chart, if you want to visualize it.
And and Steve, that that's really nothing out of the ordinary and nationally across the board. Jurisdictions are experiencing similar effects in reference to because of COVID that the case filings have have all gone down. But, you know, that it's anticipated that that will start trending upwards again. But in my involvement with the Conference of Chief Justices and and the reports of the various state courts in reference to their trends and case filings, although, you know, this is, of course, filings in reference to the the courts and not necessarily focus on the public defenders and on the various states, that that is the result. And and so it's it's no different than what we're experiencing out here in Guam.
And then I have another table just for individual attorney caseloads. And this one actually shows the entire case load, not just the pre, but the post as well. There's a lot of work that goes into our case, our clients who are on probation. And so if you look, I mean, we basically have a total of 3,864 total cases that are basically pre or post. And our pre numbers are actually 1,085. So these are cases that have not been resolved through plea or or trial. So I think we're all, you know, we're all having have manageable caseloads. I mean, we are short about three attorneys. Hopefully, we're getting one attorney sworn in next week. And then we have a couple other vacancies. But once we get a full ship, I think we'll be in really good shape. But, you know, I don't want to really go over the, I'll have the sent to the individual board members. If you want to actually see the individual attorney case numbers. But yeah, so that's about it for a public defender. I think we're, you know, I mean, we're all trudging along. You know, it's really amazing how well the justice system on Guam survived the pandemic. I mean, people are see what's going on in the mainland with, you know, people spending years in jail, right? Waiting for trial, but no, that problem hasn't surfaced on Guam. So, you know, hats off to the judiciary really for doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And of course, it's it's the community partners that make things continue to move forward. And and so, but, you know, for that, I also thank all the efforts and of the Public Defender Service Corporation in terms of both its attorneys and its staff. So any questions for our executive director?
I don't have a question, Your Honor, but I do wanted to bring this up at some point, if if maybe at the next meeting. I I know that it is, you know, everybody's been trudging along and I'm glad that Public Defender is able to continue managing its caseload, Your Honor, with with still limited staff. But I do know that at the one of the last meetings, I know E D Hattori indicated that they are still working on their conflicts. I believe it was the S O P and I'm hoping for the next meeting that I'd like to take a look at that as far as conflicts because I do notice at an average of anywhere between 143 to anywhere to to 400, you know, each caseload for each of the attorneys. And I'm sure there's reasons why. But I would like to to at some point review that and address that issue CJ and Mr. Hattori concerning, you know, the conflicts issue because that is an issue that has arisen in in the last few meetings and I, having practiced in the courts, that that's a big hot issue, too, because of a limited number of attorneys as a result of these motions to withdraw. So I would like to, for the next meeting, if we could get some update, I know that Mr. Hattori and his team were working on that based on the comments provided by Your Honor and Presiding Judge Lamarena and also with our Guam bar president. So I just bring that to their attention for the next meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. All right, Steve. So there's a request to update the statistics in reference to the number of cases withdrawn by P D and the percentage breakdown. And then, you know, just to, if you can also attach again the policy and 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 for a discussion on whether or not that there's anything that needs to be addressed whether in the policy and also maybe some explanation in in reference to or, you know, justification for the the numbers and and that that it's not an unreasonable percentage of withdrawals and any information you can share with the board.
Sure, we'll do that the next board meeting, Your Honor. And so there was, but for October, there were 13 cases we withdrew from due to conflict and 1, 2, 3, 4 of them were J P cases. So I'm not and like over half of them were juvenile cases. So we're not sure. Sometimes they charge out co-defendants with different case numbers and then we we might already represent one of the other co-defendants, but it seems like half, over half of them are juvenile matters. But so for for October was 13. And we'll, we'll work on those proposed changes that the chief justice had mentioned about having a senior attorney sign off on it. We have been discussing that with our attorneys as well during our morning meetings.
All right. Okay, we'll bring that back up to the agenda for the next meeting. And we'll have a further discussion on this. So if there are no other questions for Mr. Hattori, I'll move to our alternative public defender and our managing attorney, Annie Gale. And Attorney Gale, you're recognized.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good afternoon, everybody. We did prepare our staff. I'm sorry it was late. We've been having problems with our computer, but be that as it may, we we were able to finish this last night. Thank you to my managing, my operations manager. But so our to date, this is for the month of October. And I know everybody's, at least the the board is more interested in the the year to date for a calendar year 2022. So year to date, we've closed, we've opened 408 cases. We've closed 208 cases. We've had the with P D withdrawal to A P D, we've had 105 cases from them. So that's 26% of our cases. What the what we withdraw from 50%, I mean, 50 cases, which is 12%. So we're almost done with the year. So we have November and December to do. And then that, that's where we'll see the comparison between the other, you know, other calendar years. I know the court, excuse me, Chief Justice was very interested in these high, high numbers, the 19% and everything. So we're working on our withdrawals. We'll be able to give you our our SOPs. I think what, and then just to tie it in with what Steve is saying about the Sixth Amendment Center coming out, we can ask them, you know, to look at our stats, too, and ask for guidance and look at our policies to see, I mean, is this, are we on track or what are we doing? I mean, it 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 will help having the Sixth Amendment Center to come out. I think they're my, I think they're coming in March. Is that correct, Steve? We're doing that big conference with them and we've invited the federal public defender to help us with the conference, right, Steve?
Yeah, well, that's what we're hoping, but we haven't ironed that out yet, but we are hoping to.
So I think that will help us, Your Honor. It'll help both, you know, P D, A P D do more collaboration with national stake, national people who can help us with our, how we conduct business. Other than that, part of the, oh, anyway, so that's our stats for October. Is there, is there anything, any questions that the board members have for me?
No, I don't.
It's pretty, yeah, none. Okay, thank you. And then out of the, I just wanted to go back to the the report that Mr. Hattori wrote, stated about the $30,000 from FEMA that was reimbursed. Of that 30,000, A P D actually got $5,754. So, so that that's actually really good that we were able to get some type of reimbursement. Other than that, we were able to hire, while we're sending out the letter to Mr. Scanlon, thank you very much. He probably will start in the new year simply because he has to sell his house in Chicago and then move up, move out here. But we're looking forward to having him onboard. So with Mr. Scanlon, we'll have six attorneys onboard, which is just in time for the the new judge coming in. Other than that, we've just been really busy at court with trials and just everybody's working really hard, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. And and I do want to commend the staff. I know I have some idea of the effort regarding reimbursements from FEMA. You know, that that is very paper intensive and their restrictions, limitations are quite onerous. We experience the same thing. And so that's commendable that we P D and A P D was able to get some reimbursement from FEMA in in relation to the pandemic.
Thank you.
So if there, and and it's, 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 it's a good thing that when the Sixth Amendment team comes out and that they take a look at the operations of P D and A P D. And and so that there is an input, as you've said, Steve, and and just in reference to the performance and and this is, you know, I see it as a constructive effort to and 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 just help gauge P D and A P D in in terms of their operation. And I'm very confident that it'll be positive. So so with that, we'll move to our Elder Justice Center. And I will recognize Attorney Ron Haynes.
Thank you.
Recognize.
Thank you, Your Honor and members of the board. And we've included our charts on pages 11, 12, and 13. I think last month, we didn't, we we didn't get the chart in on time. So that's what you're looking at on pages 12 and 13 where our totals are basically that brought us up to the end of the fiscal year. These are totals for October. And you can see there, we're, we're already becoming quite busy. And we had nine home and hospital visits. That's, that's a lot to do in in one month, but things are going well. Most of what you see there, when you see number of cases open 69 and number of cases closed 24, you go, you know, my question is, where are the other 45? And what what has been happening is, you know, a trend that happens on occasion is that if we appear on the radio or if we appear at at some location, we get a lot of people that call in and begin. But then we're waiting for the rest of their forms to be filled out. So, you know, or they're making decisions and things like that, but we are caught up and moving along well.
Okay, for the record, I just want to recognize that the Presiding Judge, Presiding Judge Lamarena is logged on, has has joined the meeting. Thank you, PJ.
Thank you, CJ.
Was there any items that were left outstanding, Ron, in reference to any action by the board that is outstanding?
I, as far as, I'm, I'm sorry, I may be missing your question. The what we've been doing last month, of course, we had the resolution and we've started to begin to look at new areas and and try and get processes down with that and and how we're going to handle things. We have begun moving in that direction and I, in the new business, I will ask for actually some direction when we get there. But other than that, I feel good.
Okay, yes, I did miss that we are, we're still going to revisit that under new business. So is there, is there any questions in reference to the Elder Justice Report Centers, the report? Any questions for Attorney Ron Hayes? There being none, let's move to the last item under all business. And that's the attorney pay parity. And where we left it the last time, Steve, was that the Budget Act did not include continuing appropriation language that will provide the Board of Trustees the authority to appropriate from prior year lapses for current year operations. Is there any development in that regard, any discussion with the legislature?
Oh, yeah. So that one, we're just waiting on a draft bill, but all it would do would be to mirror what was enacted for the prosecutors. And and it would just say that you can use prior year lapses to to pay for.
But there's been communications with the legislature and and your feeling is that's been favorably received?
Oh, that, yes, that's our impression and hoping we'll get something introduced in the next week or so. It's just, you know, God, there was an election, so we haven't really been trying to bother with them because I know they're all either recovering or they were constraining on their election and recovering. So we'll, we'll get on the ball going forward. I mean, they have a their last session is the first two weeks of December, so.
Right.
Not we'll just have to.
Yeah, that's the information I have, too, but and because we have a public hearing for our eighth judge on December 1st. So we are, we're looking for that activity in the legislature. All right. So if there's no further information in that regard, we'll move under new business under Elder Justice Center and the Landlord Tenant Assistance. And Ron, you're recognized.
Thank you, Your Honor. So basically, what I want to put out to the board is some things that I've discovered rather quickly after we have had the resolution. Frankly, three days after we did that, I got a client with landlord tenant and started looking at what was going on and what Client with landlord tenant and started looking uh at what was going on and what might be the trends. Also went to the homeless uh Coalition Conference and uh we're talking to some people there, including some landlords. Um, so what I see going on i- is that in Guam, there are a lot of landlords. Uh use self-help in order to evict in a a tenant. And um I'm hoping in the spring, maybe to do a landlord conference to just kinda. Bring the landlords up to speed on the law, but um so I've had more than one call. Where a tenant has received um it received an eviction notice. Uh one was simply because their. Tendency ran out. I I mean, you know, the lease is up and uh. Uh another was for circumstances that were going on, but in in these cases, the landlords. Were um, they were giving them a proper notice as far as written goes, giving thirty days. But then saying, if you're not out at the end of the thirty days, we will lock the doors, and you will not be able to retrieve your things. Um in instead of going through. Uh i- the court system to get rid of possession. So I I started looking into what does it take for a landlord to get rid of possession and. And uh I called the courts and and uh talked to some other attorneys as to as to what they're charging. And I learned that a a landlord will file in Superior Court. And that's a three hundred dollar filing fee, and basically, there are no forms with the court, so they. Need to hire a lawyer. I I called um some lawyers just to get some prices, and we're told that they charge. Five thousand dollars to to do a an unlawful detainer rid of possession. Um I don't know if that would then be for follow-up, uh security deposits, anything else, but to begin that case. We're talking about five thousand dollars. Now, if the tenant should lose. And and first of all, in Superior Court, um you know, they don't have the relaxed rules of evidence, so that means a tenant. Who's already probably uh not, doesn't have a lot of money. Cannot hire an attorney, and there's no relaxed rules of evidence, so um let's say the tenant loses. Well, it's most likely that then those attorney's fees and filing costs then get it. Tacked on to the judgment on the tenant. And what we're looking at is really a pathway for homelessness. Um to to think that a tenant who may be behind and may. Be justly evicted would then have a five thousand three hundred judgment backed on. Uh the things that they need to overcome uh would be, you know, that's a, that's a lot. I started looking at Arizona, Oregon, Washington, and California law. And that all of those places, those are the only ones that I've checked, and every single one of those has forms. That a landlord could fill out, so they they wouldn't have to have an attorney. Um and that would hold down costs for the landlord on the front side as well as for. Um, you know, a tenant with a judgment against him. I mean, as far as I can tell, a form in this situation would be a win-win. Uh but, you know, I I'm here basically to ask for your guidance. Is there a way we can get that done? Um also, other jurisdictions, not California and not Oregon, but there are other jurisdictions. That the legislature ha- has stated that, you know, you could file in small claims. That holds the cost down even further. Relaxes the rules of evidence so that, you know, uh both landlord and tenant can come in unrepresented. And follow the law instead of. In instead of using self-help, which historically has resulted in violence. I mean, when somebody gets locked out, can't get their things, um you know, we've seen it throughout history that that this is uh. Not the process that should be taken, and it's why we have law that, you know, you you can file and get rid of possession. So basically, I'm I'm laying that out there for the board to ask for. Uh your ideas and and um, you know, your direction in this that. I could begin to to follow and see if we can't. Uh if we can't get both landlords and tenants to follow the law and and not just create homelessness.
Does, does anyone have any uh response to um Ron's comments?
I do, Your Honor. Uh Attorney Cubey. So first and foremost, I do represent landlords, Ron, and I'm also a landlord, so I do have properties. Unfortunately, I I understand the predic- predicament that you're in. But I think this is something that may have to be done legislatively. Um there are a number of attorneys, in addition to myself, who've done a lot of unlawful detainer actions. It is a very pricey, costly uh issue, but I do know that the legislature has struggled. With this particular issue, and more recently, in the last, I think, four or five years. They have updated some uh um uh they've updated the law on with regards to landlord-tenant relationship and its rules. So I think this is something, I think, a work in progress. Ron, I'm happy to talk to you more in detail, but I do know that there was such, uh there was great. I don't wanna say opposition, but there were significant um um groups. Either in favor of tightening the law and or opposing uh any kind of um. Of restrictions, so uh my comments would be CJ and Your Honor and board member staff. I think this is something that uh first, I think, may need to be addressed with the legislature, if this is something that needs to be done. The current law provides that. Um if there is a contract, it then they can go through an unlawful detainer action. It's five days to appear. Uh and then it it sets for a hearing. If there's no cop, there's no lease agreement or contract, then it's a complaint for ejection. And that can go past thirty days. It gives the uh hopefully the tenant a little bit more time. But I think this is something that will need to, there'll be probably more discussions, possibly. Sitting down with the legislator legislature to draft those uh with regards to any changes with the landlord laws. So that that's my comments as far as this is concerned, because I. Had legal experience, and I've had personal experiences evicting people from my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Cubey. Any other comments uh for Ron Han Haynes before I close on this?
Uh may I ask a question of uh uh Attorney Cubey?
After I I make my um.
Okay.
Then you can. Right, if there are none, uh Ron, what I'd like for you to do, uh this is coming for me, cuz I wanna uh bring this to a head. Is prepare a resolution um for the next board meeting um. That uh lays out what assistance the Elder Justice Center can provide uh in this area uh for those who qualify. Uh with a one-page justification, and we'll bring it to a vote, and and so. Uh one way or the other, we'll dispose of whether or not the Elder Justice Center is going to be able to provide. Assistance to those who qualify uh to help them in their landlord-tenant dispute. And um we can let um the other uh segments of the community. Um address that uh at with the legislature, uh but just in terms of the clientele. Uh of the Elder Justice Center, uh what assistance uh can be provided for those who qualify. And uh let's just bring it to a vote at the next board meeting. You can ask your question.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Um uh Attorney Cubey, I'm just wondering, what do you think of the of of the forms? Uh and perhaps you've never been in a jurisdiction that uses forms. It it allows. The landlord just to go forward as well, just fill, check some boxes, fill out some things and and move forward.
I I would suggest, Ron, that maybe I I haven't seen the forms. So I I wouldn't know, but I can tell you in my experience, when I've had evictions done, part of the concern, Ron, is when I've gone in there. Significant damage to the property. Um, I've paid anywhere between five to ten thousand dollars. To update it because either the tenant was so upset or some things happened, so that's the other issue, but I'd like, I'd like to take a look at the forms. I'm happy to look at it and. Give you my feedback. Um, you know, I I wanna help these tenants, but at the same time, the the risk too is. If there's any significant damages to the property, that's gonna be a problematic issue, so. If you wanna send it over to me, I'm happy to take a look at it, give you my thoughts, see if this is something that can be done, as the CJ has pointed out. You know, first of all, determine how EJ C can help them, who qualifies. And then see to what extent that the EJC can help those who are being unfairly evicted. Uh from the the property, and and maybe we may just have to consider limiting it to. Those who do qualify, you know, in a on a limited basis. So if you wanna send those forms to me, I'm happy to take a look at it. Thank you.
Okay, uh I'll do that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions uh for for Ron Haynes, Mr. Haynes? There being none, um. Anything under public discussion?
Recording in progress.
Okay, I thought we were being recorded. But um if there uh if there's nothing else uh under public discussion. Um at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sir. But but before that, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Yes, it's been moved, seconded by Attorney X B, and um I wanna add my. My happy Thanksgiving greeting to all of you, and have a safe and um. Joyous uh Thanksgiving uh with your family and friends. PJ?
Yes, I like to wish, I I've been having problems getting in. I finally got in. Like to wish everybody a happy and prosperous Thanksgiving.
And I don't wanna cut you off, uh PJ. Did you wanna comment on anything that uh has been discussed?
Uh no, uh I'll reserve my comment uh once we're um Ron drafts the resolution, proposed resolution. I'd just like to look at it if I make any comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, everybody, um have a happy Thanksgiving, and thank you all.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, Your Honor.
Goodbye.